I spoke, you'll call me in order at 6:35. We'll start by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To define the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, we consider the appointment of Chad Boudreau to fill vacancy in Ward Six with the resignation of Chad Spooner. We had no one get an application form in time and did not gather signatures. So we quite sure we will fill this until next election?
It's a one-year appointment.
One-year appointment. So with that, I entertain any motions?
I'll make a motion to appoint Chad Boudreau to fill the vacancy in Ward Six.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Chad for Chad.
Any hearing done? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion passes. So we'll start. Our next, Chad will be swearing in with Eric and myself. And Jill will be doing that, correct? So do you, Jill, you want to do each councilman individually or together?
Whatever you prefer.
Together in the past, right?
I think we do it together usually.
Eric, if you want to step up and Chad, please come forward. With Jill and then upon swearing in, you both will take your appropriate seats.
What about you two?
So if you would raise your hand? I do solemnly swear or affirm?
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont?
That I will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont.
And that I will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious?
I will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious?
Yes. To the Constitution or government thereof?
To the Constitution or government thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under pains and penalties of perjury?
Under pains and penalties of perjury.
This 11th of March 2024.
This 11th of March 2024.
All right. And then your oath of office one more time. I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the oath office of City Council member?
I will faithfully execute the office of City Council member.
For the City of St. Almond?
For the City of St. Almond.
And will there undo equal right and justice to all persons?
And there will undo equal right and justice to all persons.
To the best of my judgment and ability?
To the best of my judgment and ability.
According to law?
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury, this 11th of March 2024.
Under the pains and penalty of perjury, this 11th of March 2024.
All right.
That it?
Thank you. Chad, is that it? And Jill?
Heck, right, yeah.
Chad, you're here.
Perfect.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Thank you.
The oath is the hardest part of it.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, Chad. Sorry. Sorry, I was just having a...
Don't mess it up.
I always do.
Make him remember why.
I, Tim Smith, do solemnly swear? That I will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont?
That I will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont.
And I will not directly or indirectly?
And I will not directly or indirectly?
Do any act or thing injurious?
Do any act or thing injurious?
To the Constitution or government thereof?
To the Constitution or government thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under pains and penalties of perjury, this 11th of March 2024.
Under pains and penalty of perjury, this 11th of March 2024.
And then the oath of office. I, Tim Smith, do solemnly swear?
I, Tim Smith, do solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully execute the office of City Council Mayor?
One more time on that.
That I will faithfully execute the office of City Council Mayor?
I will faithfully execute the office of the Mayor of St. Almond?
And will there undo equal right and justice?
And there will undo equal rights and justice?
To all persons, to the best of my judgment and ability?
To all persons, to the best of my judgment and ability?
According to law?
According to law.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury?
Under pains and penalty of perjury?
This 11th of March 2024.
This 11th of March 2024. Thank you, Jill. Okay, we will move to election of Council President.
I would like to nominate Tim Hawkins for Council President.
And I'd like to second it.
Let's think about that first. Any questions or comments?
Let's see, Jason, we have the floor. You can.
Being that it's a one-year appointment, I'll accept the nomination. As long as everyone votes for it in favor.
Anyone, all those in favor of Mr. Hawkins as Council President, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I won't talk as much as Chad, I guarantee you.
Okay, we'll move to public comment. Anyone who has any comments on any item that's not on the agenda, within our purview, we ask that you keep your comments for two minutes. Mr. Farrar, if you want to come on?
I just want to say that I enjoyed my service on the City Council. It was only for three years, but I enjoyed working with a lot of you folks, and Dominic, and Chip Sawyer, and you, Sarah, and all the rest of the city personnel. I think the Council accomplished a lot. We had some spirited discussions in the executive session and in public session. And I know there's two new members, and I'm sure they're going to fit right in. Eric, talk to Eric a little bit tonight. And Chad, I don't know, but I'm sure he's very talented and will fit right in. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. And I'll keep in touch with what the Council was doing. I felt like voting a few minutes ago, but... So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, as you alluded to, you were only on three years, but appreciate your service. I thought we had a good mix. Some might have thought we had too many lawyers on the board, but I don't know if that...
Well, it's one less now.
One less now. Lovely, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
My question for you is, if there's committee work, is that still a conflict of interest?
I guess it would depend on what it is. So if you want to give me a call on some issue or committee that turns up, I'd be glad to think about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thanks for your time and service. Don't hesitate to call on anything. We know you cover the streets on a regular basis, so if you can be our eyes and ears, we'd appreciate that as well.
Okay, I'll keep in touch with everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Or the guy in the back row, anything? No? Do we have anyone on? Clicked on yet? Sarah?
We do, but no one appears to want to speak for public.
That's good.
Okay. So we're going to move on to item number six, which is presentation of the fiscal year 23 financial statement audit. And with us, Sarah, you'll do the introduction?
Yes, and Alina is with us on Zoom. Alina, can you hear me okay? Are you there?
Yeah.
Oh. Hold on. Excellent. Let me... Can you speak again?
Can you hear me?
We're getting there. Someone left me in charge of tech today. We're all paying the price. How about now, Alina? Go ahead and say something.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear.
We can hear you, yeah. I'm going to turn this one up a little bit, and I think we'll be okay. Try again?
Is this better?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Tim, you are right under the speaker. So Alina has a PowerPoint that I neglected to download in all of the chaos. And I'm going to grab it briefly off the website. You'll give me just a second. Now, mine works well under pressure. I hope you can... Hope see that in my evaluation. It's coming here. All right, so let me get back to Zoom. And I'm going to share the... Here we are, the presentation. Can you all hear me okay if I sit over here and manage this while we chat?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm going to start. So Alina is with us today. Alina is one of the partners with our auditing firm, Markham. Markham is a well-respected and well-known regional. I guess they're all down the East Coast now. They've just expanded or they just... Previously, we're Melanson and merged with Markham. They are excellent, knowledgeable, and experienced in the governmental accounting segment, which, as many of you may or may not know, governmental accounting is markedly different from business accounting. Governments answer to a different standard-setting body, use multiple bases of accounting, which I got a little bit carried away with explaining in my memo at the end of last week. And we present financial statements that look different from business financial statements. So we had our FY '23 audit with Alina and her crew last fall, in October. We had a lovely time talking about accounting theory and debits and credits and reconciliations for about a week. And the team has finalized our financial statement audit, our TIF agreed upon procedures. Everyone here, we have a list of procedures performed by our auditing firm since 2016. And Alina will talk a little bit about those. And we had a single audit. And we have wrapped all of those up now. And I'll hand it over to Alina to talk about the results of those three engagements.
Thank you so much for the... On the second slide. We're going to just briefly review on the audit process the reports that are our issues. And we'll go into a little more into some of the numbers we have highlighted from your financial statements. And we'll finish with your management letter recommendations. And as Sarah mentioned, we'll touch on the tip slide as well. So with that, we'll go into the financial statement audit process. So provide an opinion on your financial statements, which is the responsibility of management. Now, for every material balance sheet and income statement item, we have audit procedures that we perform in addition to all the other audit procedures we do, which include the risk assessment procedures, which although they have to do with internal control, we do not express an opinion on internal control because we... This is a financial statement audit and not an internal control examination. But we are obtaining understanding of your internal control. And on an annual basis, we are doing a reperformance, basically a walkthrough of your controls. And then with the next slide, I just... Yes, with statements, I'm not going to go into 94 and 96 because they were really deemed either not material or not applicable for your financial statements, even though they were effective for fiscal year 2023. And this is good news with the amount of standards that GASP has been issued lately, that you get a breather for fiscal year '24, really the next one that you really got to look into any value and see if it changes your financial statements. Would be one-on-one on the compensated absences, but that is not effective till fiscal year 2025. And then the next slide. This is a listing of reports that we issued. As I mentioned, we do provide an opinion on your financial statements. And that's really our main report that results in the audit of financial statements. So that report, though, does not include the management discussion and analysis, general budgetary comparison schedule, and pension required supplemental information because BBA, the budget comparison schedule, budget for sexual... The pension information, that's part of your required supplemental information. So what the financial statement audit includes is your basic financial statements. And then it's not really an opinion on your management discussion analysis or your RSI. Now, we also issued the management letter. Not really required to be issued separately. We issued separately for this year because the city was used to us issuing it separately. It can be as part of the governance letter. So if there are any comments in the future, we just plan to include them, add them to the governance letter in the future. We also issued some audit reports, and we also issued the TIP report. The overview of the financial statement. So it starts with the independent auditors' report. I'm not an opinion, which is typically what you see and what you would expect. That just means nothing. We didn't need to give you any verification to your financial statements in order for them to be conformative with GAAP, the generally accepted accounting principles. Following the independent auditors' report is your management discussion and analysis. And that's where management highlights some key numbers throughout the year and that includes some comparison to the prior year. Following that is what is typically called the dual perspective financial statement because it's two sets of them. You start with government-wide financial statements on a long-term perspective, meaning on an accrual basis of accounting. That's when all the governmental activities get consolidated and then reported on accrual basis. And then there is a long column for the other year of business activities. Now, on the fund financial statements, although enterprise funds and fiduciary funds are on accrual basis, your governmental funds, like general transfer of revenue, debt service, and capital budget fund, those are not on a flow basis. Those are short-term perspective, meaning they're not on a flow basis. Following those financial statements, we have notes to the financial statements. And then your financial statements end with RSI, required supplemental information. And then we'll go into some of the actual highlights from the financial statements. So most people usually go straight to the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which of course, general fund is your main operating fund. So here's a comparison of 2023 unassigned fund balance in general fund to the previous three years. Now, I want to point this one out. If you guys opened your financial statements before, it's actually on page 19. That's where the balance sheet is for governmental funds. And at the bottom left, you'll see the total unassigned fund balance, which is negative $350,118. Now, it's not as drastically down as this makes it look. There was a $350,000 restatement basically last year. There was an ARPA bond that was planned to be used, but wasn't... But was applied towards revenue. And so it was corrected this year to restate the unearned revenue liability, meaning to put it back there until it actually is applied, which decrease unassigned fund balance. So that really would be a comparison to a negative $162,068 last year. So it's not a drastic change. It's really a decrease of $152,460. And on your financial statements, you'll see that we did restate last year. So it is comparing it to the negative amount last year, even though here you have a slight positive amount. This comes directly from your prior year financial statements. So although it is negative, you can see that it was negative in 2020. And it really was slightly negative last year. As on the next slide, it's basically the same information than the slide that we just referenced, slide seven, except this is just comparing it to the total expenditures in general fund. So this is unassigned fund balance in general fund as a percentage of total expenditures in general fund. So because it's negative, it's as of June 30, 2023, it shows as a negative rate percent. And on the following slide. These are the different categories of fund balance. So you can see that the unassigned is the purple one. And that's the $350,000 that I mentioned is on page 19 of your financial statements. It also discussed in other places, including management discussion and analysis. And also there was a fund balance note, too. There is other categories that have more detail, particularly in the fund balance. Now, there is more detail to those categories. But there's a non-spendable, which is going up slightly here. And then there's restricted committed, which is the smaller one there in the middle of the blue. And then unassigned, as we saw in previous slides, that it was a good pattern amount like two years ago. And if this was restated last year, as we were stating in the financial statement, then that purple would have been a little bit down, negative $160,000. So it would have been a little more comparative. But that's the history of your fund balance accounts in general. And on the next slide. So, you know, of course, the main... One of the biggest reasons for fund balance, unassigned fund balance going down is how you do on your budget for deduction. So these are your budgetary results of the operation. So revenues in comparison to budget, you have a million dollar extra. But expenditures in comparison to budget, that's where you have an over expenditure of $1,424,000. And that's really what brings it down to the negative net budgetary results of $313,000. And then on the next slide. So there is major funds that are required to be presented in the financial statements. And there's major funds if you choose to present them. And this is some of those, is the debt service major fund. And then everything else is getting combined in non-major. So this is basically how much you have of revenues versus expenses. So that increment is your tax increment. And two years ago, you also got to transfer in and there. So in total, revenues and other banks and sources, that's the lighter color. So you could see that the debt service was exceeding those. Last year, it was not... It was pretty comparable, but the expense did exceed it in 2023 and 2021. So which kind of makes that fund balance go... Basically goes down because of that. And then on the following slide. This will be a water fund. So now we're going into enterprise funds. And I mentioned the enterprise funds are not on a non-accrual basis. They're on accrual basis, a different basis of accounting. So therefore, their equity accounts are different as well. So here is what's called the net position instead of the fund balance. And this is then that investment in capital assets because accrual accounts funds do have capital assets on the balance sheet. So any capital assets net related debt are in equity there called the net investment capital assets. So that amount is the lighter color. And then you can see that the unrestricted net position in the water fund at 630, 23 was $400,000. And then on the following slide, we have the waste water fund, the other enterprise fund we have. And that's, you know, excluded the smaller storm one. These two are the bigger ones. And we have $12 million that was a net investment capital assets at 630, 23. And then we have $989,000 that was unrestricted net position at waste water. And this is how it compares to the last two years. So that's been a slightly going down. And then we go into the debt. So your notes to the financial statements have a lot more detail that there's multiple pages of debt notes. So you can see detail behind all of these categories. But at June 30, 23, the long-term debt, including loans, which is payable, here I've broken up... Tip governmental as well, but we segregated it here. So you can see that governmental and tip separately. And then the purple is business-type activities. So really, it's more like white than orange for governmental. Sorry for the colors here. But they're kind of a little bright, so sorry. But that, but you can see here how much you have tip debt, which is part of governmental. And then together, all governmental, you can see it's a little more than business-type than typically governmental debt would be higher than business-type. And then on the following slide. You have the net pension liability. So you can see here it's broken down. You have your plan, which is a close plan, and the city's plan. And then we have Beavers. So the city's basically... The city's plan is basically should be dimensioned. And as... And Beavers is where pretty much all your employees are, the Markham's complete retirement system. So you can see the liability for the city plan here is $3 million at 230, 23. And Beavers is $4 million. And so it looks like it drastically went up, doubled. But really, the last... This is first of all, Beavers gets reported based on the measurement date of the previous year. So even though this is your 2023 numbers, this really was measured in 2022. And because back then, the investments did much worse to what was expected, that's why it looks like the liability went up so much. So it's just basically in assumptions have drastically changed liability. And if you did not commit to what you expected, that can change significantly as well. And then on the following slide. And then our management letter recommendations. We did from prior year, there are no new management letter recommendations. And I want to say first that these are not significant deficiencies. These are not material weaknesses. This is just recommendations that we had that already started being implemented, but as during fiscal year '23, they were not fully resolved, so we repeated them. So one of them is just the recommendation that it really is the best practice to have periodic internal audits, especially in a small city where some of the department certification duties cannot be fully obtained. So that would be key to do. And then implement controls of a system user rights. In number, just basically user access rights and making sure best practices really is the least privileged type of access rights and not so much privileged access. So just making sure there is a limited access right in there based on the employees' roles in their job and their position. And that kind of relates to the next, which is the information technology policy, basically just formalizing the policies. It's more written and follow these... The system user rights and the IT policy that already has... The implementation of these recommendations has begun. And then the last column here is the implement controls of a procurement policy. It's really resulted as of last year's audit. We noted that there was a country that didn't seem to follow the city's handbook for procurement. But the policy, as we understand, are being revisited and will be revised in the future. So once that happens, we just want to come in to make sure that there's monitoring of compliance to that new procurement policy. And that's really all, management letter recommendations. And then on the following slide, this is... I believe that the WFC did their training in January of 2016. So the first year that they had the independent auditors do these equitable procedures was for fiscal year, for year ending 630, 16. So we've been doing them since that year. So that is now for fiscal year 16, two fiscal years, we're within the 12 years. And this is from the WFC Equitable Procedures Recommended Procedures Guide. It's the attachment that we attached to our tip report. These are... There are seven listed there, but really, number seven is just basically certifying these SIPS. And so each one requires to sample a few to confirm original possible value, to confirm new parcels, to basically verify completeness accuracy of tax improvement calculation and retention. And verify what was reported as improvements related to our debt service costs. And then if there were monitoring visits, then just follow up and map. So this is... They have not had any exceptions for the one they did for 630. So, so this is, they have not had any exceptions for the one they did for six thirty twenty-three, and they have not had any exceptions in the past either. The only exception that I noted was going to the very first fiscal year sixteen, but after that, we did not note any exceptions when we went doing these equitable procedures, paragraph D recommended procedures. And that's really, we wish us a large success as well, and that's really all we have that I have in the PowerPoint, and I'm just gonna turn it over to you to see if there's any[637.24]
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Dom, can you share?
I think what, if I heard correctly, I'm sorry, I can't hear it well because it keeps getting interrupted from me. But this is, so this is a small, equitable procedures report that these are back to your apartments. But when the state auditor comes down, their audit, they do their own procedures. So, so just, but you know, the, just I didn't want that to be confused and be taken to.
I'm gonna have a real problem if the state auditor has a problem after our auditor doesn't have a problem.
You're gonna have a problem.
Yeah, we're gonna have a problem, right? So, you know, now we can say, look, we have our own auditor looking at this and that. This is what's, this is how we, this is how we've come up with our methodology.
Dom, question for you. For the benefit of Chad and Eric, can you just touch on the enterprise fund and what it is?
I'm gonna direct at the Sarah.
So the city actually has three enterprise funds. We have two major enterprise funds which were included in the presentation. We have the water enterprise fund, the wastewater enterprise fund, and the stormwater enterprise fund. And an enterprise fund is a fund that is intended to be self-supporting based on user fees, including all of its debt service and capital investments over time. And so this may start ringing a bell when you put your own personal water sewer and stormwater bill. That's how those are generated with the budgets for the water sewer and stormwater funds. Then the rates are set based on those budgets with an eye for covering all costs. Those are reported separately from the general fund and the general governmental activities, which live in a non-exchange transaction world and a modified approval and more near-term focus accounting that we talked about briefly at the beginning, and I talked about it linked in my memo. And those are funded by tax dollars. So that's the key distinction there, rate payers, tax.
What's the difference between the restricted money and non restricted?
So, in the slide? So, I'm gonna pop back up here. So we have wastewater here. So net position is the equity position of an enterprise fund. So assets minus liabilities equal equity. And equity goes up or down every year depending on how much or how little revenue exceeded expenses during the prior fiscal year. In that position in enterprise funds, as you might see in a for-profit business, is broken into this net investment in capital assets, which is akin to non-spendable fund balance in the general fund. So basically, we have all these assets. We can't go into Ace Hardware and buy supplies with them. Right, you know, like, you know, here's some bolts from the water department, people barter, but they really are bolstering the financial position of the funds. And so the net investment in capital assets is just that. It is the net of the capital assets, the value of the assets, less accumulated appreciation, less the outstanding balance on any debt used to purchase or expand those assets. And then unrestricted net position is everything else in there. You may occasionally see a restricted net position category if there's something restricted from external forces or external sources like grants or debt governance. But for this year, last few years, we've just had unrestricted and the net investment. The unrestricted in our financial statements is effectively the cumulative reserve over time on the water and stormwater and wastewater funds. And as others may note, the decrease from 22 to 23 correlates approximately to that extra extraordinary sludge removal project that we have been talking about over the last year. You've got to use in reserves to fund. So there's correlation there with things we've talked about previously. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Sarah, on our packet, there's no enterprise fund for stormwater. Is that because it's so minimal?
Yes, that's because it's not beneath the threshold of major fund. And so the packet has presented what is reported as major funds in the financial statements. You will see stormwater is its own column in the enterprise fund financial statements, but it is noted as non-major. So on pages 23 and 24, that's why.
Sarah, did Alina say that we were, we had addressed all of last year's audit recommendations?
No, there are no new audit recommendations, but there are still four on the list.
And these, so these four are from the last time?
They are, yes.
And we're implementing that stuff, though, right?
We absolutely are. And so the regular departmental audit, internal audits, you may recall that last year there was also a more regular general ledger and accounting monitoring recommendation. We've implemented that in its entirety. And now that we're fully staffed again, we're moving into some additional internal audits. And Alina and I spoke about this when they're here for fieldwork, about what we could do internally to help, to help us design processes to like ensure where there isn't enough staff to have really pure segregation of duties that we're taking a step in for finance and doing an internal audit process throughout the year to help strengthen our internal controls. Starting in January of 2024, we made a major step in improving controls over system user rights. I work with Denmark and we overhaul all of the logins to that system. And the city now has a new IT partner. So we have our existing IT consultant, and he's made backstop by another company. And those folks are all currently working on a IT policy to have in place by June 30th. And I have a consolidated financial policy review in Word starting to work on that I expect to have in place by June 30th as well.
And that's an example of an internal control that this audit didn't address, right?
That's, yeah, they improve controls or.
Because didn't this report say that they make no recommendations as to our internal controls?
They don't express an opinion on our internal controls, but they do have some best practices type recommendation in this management letter.
And that's up for, that's for you to do, right?
Sure is. That's my to-do list.
Okay.
I'll tell you questions.
Clear as mud.
All right, Alina, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much. You have a great night.
You too. Thank you, Alina. Sarah, do you wanna add anything to that discussion? I don't know what we.
I do not, but if anyone has follow-up questions, I'm fine. My door's always open. And I do love to talk about governmental accountants, so I'm happy to chat.
Dom, we gotta accept this?
Nope, I don't think so.
No?
No. Just has to be delivered.
All right. We're gonna move on to item number seven. I think Chip, there's Chip right there.
Hi, Chip.
Online with us.
Hey, Chip.
Like his St. Albans sign in the background.
Yep. He just put that up.
Yep, he got to that Bayberry Cottage.
That's always been there. It just happens to be positioned perfectly for when I Zoom from home.
You look like a sports announcer, Chip.
Thanks, everyone, for your time. We have joining us tonight a couple of staff members from Tyler Technologies. John Vickery's on Zoom. I believe Andrew Mahoney's in there in person.
Andrew on the monitor.
We've been working with these gentlemen for a while now on a citywide reappraisal, which, which we've talked about before in the past. I'm just gonna set it up real quick. There's been a lot of talk about the common level of appraisal that we're subject to in the city and how it's gone quite low because all the values of the properties in our grant list haven't really been reappraised in the market since 2011. And as we know, the market, especially the housing market, has gone kinda crazy since then. And the way the state's education revenue system is set up, they want every community to be, taxes to be raised as if every community was right at where the market is with your grant list. So when your grant list goes low, they apply a lower common level of appraisal, which inflates the tax rate for everyone, all taxpayers in the community, if your grant list is, if your grant list values are below, you know, the way the market's going with sales. It's a very blunt instrument that we're being subject to for the, for the purpose of fairness. It's time to do a reappraisal. We've been ordered by the state to do a reappraisal. We waited with the state's permission for about a year while the legislature in Montpelier was considering a bill or two that might have changed the situation for us. So we kinda held on to it for a sec. Turns out, when things were said and done, the changes they made did not affect the city of St. Albans. So we're back to meeting a reappraisal. We put out an RFP and we attracted a few, a few, a few proposals, one of them from Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies is a firm that inspired our confidence from the beginning. They're treating the reappraisal of the city of St. Albans as one of the ways of proving that they can do this work in, in, in the state of Vermont. They have some new staff members that have been doing assessing and reapraising for a while that, that wanna show that they can do this work for Tyler in Vermont. So they're committed to this work, and they committed to a timeline that frankly beat out some of the proposals that we were going to get back before. We put the pause on our activities for what was happening in the legislature. So we're in a pretty good position. And this is an introduction to what's gonna happen next to, to John and Andrew at Tyler Technologies. And what we can expect as we move forward into the reappraisal. We, we plan on having an updated grant list for April 1st of 2025 that now reflects the current market. And we're going to be prepared to take a lot of questions over tonight and over the course of the reappraisal about what's going on and how it could affect various different properties. And, and the one thing I'll leave everyone with is that for, if anyone's concerned about your property value being treated fairly amongst all the others when all is said and done, and not being subject to that very blunt CLA, but being subject to your property being updated based on what it would be valued in the market today, the best thing you can do as a property owner is respond to any mailings or any other communications you get from the city and our consultants from this reappraisal. Make sure that we have the most accurate data about the, the state of your property and the materials so that we can make sure everyone is valued fairly in the grant list when all is said and done. And with that, I will move it over to John. Oh, John, you need to unmute yourself.
Can everybody share me?
Yes.
Hi, Sal. Chip, well put. That was a very nice intro, an overview of this reappraisal project. I'm John Vickery, the senior project manager for this project. And we are, we have onsite Andrew Mahoney, who is our residential reviewer. We also have another local, Rob Chapi, who will be working with us as a residential reviewer as well. We've been working either behind the scenes or onsite over the past, past couple of months. We've also been waiting for the, the conversion of the property data to a more modern platform, which is, it's almost done, but there's some review with that to occur. We are gonna be sending out data mailers and doing inspections relatively soon. We already have done a little review of that, so we have a soft, soft mailing and so forth. But we will get moving with the data collection and analysis. I think it's very important for us to do two things. One is, is data verification of the property data that we have by visiting each, each and every property, if they're from the outside, hopefully the inside, and sound analysis. And we'll do extensive research on each and every sale and review that helps build our evaluation tables, which will be applied to all the unsold properties and all the properties in general. I'd like to say that we will have new values by April 1st of 2024. Before that, we'll have the formals. We have set up a website that I think needs to be launched, which is very informational, has Q and A's, videos, and any general information that you'd like. It'll also show the folks that are working on the project so that we are familiar with, with folks that go online and wonder who we are, those people walking around with footboards and, and tape measures and so forth. So we want to be very open. We want to be informative. And of course, we wanna be fair. That's our main goal here. So I, I think I've given the overview. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to chime in.
So will you be going in every house?
Excuse me?
Are you entering houses or just looking at houses from the outside?
Well, we're gonna stop at every single house and knock on the door and ask for inspection. If not, hopefully we'll have scheduled inspections. We probably won't get into every single home. That's almost nearly impossible. And in this environment, we don't get into our company just like any other company. Only gets into about 30 to 40% of the homes. But we will be seeing the exterior of every single home, probably driving by multiple times, walking by as well, and also reviewing properties from the internet, MLS, and GIS.
It seems like that would be not super equitable. Like, I know my dad just had a reappraisal in Fairfield. He had COVID, so they couldn't come in. Other, you know, so I feel like if someone goes in your house and your house looks better on the inside than it does on the outside, or it, how, how do you address that in the appraisal? So the people that let you in or the people who don't let you in?
So if people that don't let us in, we use our pre-existing knowledge, and that's what every other reassessment firm does. We go off of the legacy data that we have, and we try to confirm as much as we can from the street side. Legally, we cannot do anything beyond that. If there's a discrepancy with our value, what we have and what they have, they would bring it up for discussion during the informals, and then we would request an in-person inspection to try to alleviate the concerns between the differences of what we observed from the street versus what they say they have while denying us the inspection. So not everyone's home all the time when we're doing these inspections. We're gonna send out a data mailer. We're currently waiting for another batch of information to get processed through Patriot Properties. We have a reiteration of the building data that needs to be processed. When that's done, the next step is the data mailer process. And that is another, that is our tool where we can formally, formally schedule the inspection, the internal inspection. So we will get back our data that we get from the data mailers. We'll set up our schedules. And then we will also do an in-person knob as a last attempt to try to collect the most accurate information, which, like you said, is an internal inspection.
Yeah, following up on what both Andrew and John have said, you know, for the properties we can't get into, like John said, we'll use the MLS. And Tyler Technologies will have a license to the MLS that allows them to view past listings, including the pictures of what is inside a building when it was listed. And then, as Andrew says, the data mailer will request that people update the information on everything, many different aspects of the home, including interior aspects. So there are still some ways of us getting information on the interior of homes, even the ones that aren't able to be visited. Plus, we have access to permitting data that, that Arlie and Sarah will be, will be assisting with the project.
Will you use Lister cards as well?
Correct. The prior, the Microsoft data that we currently have on memory.
They're not gonna admit to it, but it would sit out if you don't let them in.
Chip, right, the Lister cards?
I did hear all of that, Tim, but you're asking, you're asking about our current Lister cards?
Yeah, they're all electronic now?
I can't say that, but it's.
Yeah, and it actually, it always, yeah, it's electronic. It's in a database that, our current database is being upgraded to a new, more modern tool, which is the Patriot Properties product that Andrew just mentioned.
And then for anyone who may not have got a building permit and did some improvements on the house that will show during this process as well?
There are ways we could possibly catch that, especially if they might have done some improvements, didn't get a permit, but then they listed their house for sale, and Tyler Technologies' review of the MLS data might show it in the pictures of the home. Yeah, I think Trudy asked a really good question tonight. The level of confidence in any community's reappraisal can be based upon how many buildings the team is able to actually visit and get inside. However, I just say that we're on the same playing field as all the other municipalities. And there's no, there's no municipal reappraisal. I, I, I put my money on that no municipal reappraisal that's gotten inside every building. And that John's, John's report of the 30 to 40% probably holds true with all the reappraisings being done in the state right now.
So how many, how many attempts do you make of that? You, you call me up and I say, I'm not around. How many times do you try to get into a house?
John, you know how many attempts you make to pursue access? Thinking it's two.
I, well, yes, we'll, we'll have one. One attempt will be the data mailer. Another attempt will be an actual visit, knock on the door. So it'll be a minimum of two, two attempts. We're also gonna be doing build reviews, and if folks call in, they can, they can request an inspection if they want to do that, do that means.
And you just walk through the house? You just go all through the house? Is that what you do?
For inspection?
Yeah. It's like going all, you walk all around.
Yeah, start from the basement.
But you don't have to do that if you get a proper data mailer back.
Verification has to be done. So if you're gonna be, if you, if you send the data mailer and you tell me your condition's poor, very poor, worst house in the world, and we do an inspection and you have a quite nice house, you know, that verification is quite important for us to give you the most accurate tax burden.
Okay, so now you've done the inspection on my house, then what are you gonna do? What do, what do you do with that?
What do I do with the information?
Yeah, yeah.
So we take the legacy information and our new information. We take our new information, we're gonna upload to the Patriot Property software. We then collect all the information of all the towns we build our tables to evenly distribute the tax burden based off of where your location is, house type, age, condition.
So that's, that's the value? That's how you come up with the value? How are you gonna come up with the value of my house? You've come through my house?
Yes.
You've taken a look at it. You've inputted the information on your Patriot Missile Command computer. And now that spits out a value?
John, do you wanna explain the, the way the multipliers work in the Patriot Property system?
Sure, yes. Thank you. I apologize because it's a little hard of hearing. But the way we develop the tables is we use, we use statistical analysis that, of measures of equity. And these are measures developed by the International Association of Assessing Officers. So it's very important for us to review every sale extensively that helps build our tables. And then it's also important to collect the best data that we possibly can because that data collection will result in, if you have correct tables, will result in correct value if you also post two components together, correct data and correct valuation tables. But it's through statistical analysis, multiple regression, and you can create values of different components that make up value of a particular, particular property.
So the inspection of your house, you have hardwood floors, tinfoil ceilings, very nice house. It was nice, very nice. Each individual component, quality, condition, each, the size of your house, the age of your house, those will go into minor factors, a multiplication, a multiplier factors that will tell us based off of the, based off of St. Albans, our current land values, our current price per square foot base value of each house. Those small modifying factors will blend together as a cumulative evaluation, cumulative equation, plus or minus. A very good flooring, you have new kitchen, you don't have a new kitchen. You're gonna have a multiplier of 1.2 because you have a very nice kitchen. You have a dated kitchen. You might have a 0.98, a 0.9 valuation. So these very small differences between quality, condition, and amenities balance to create a forecast that would give you the value of your house. So it's not straightforward. It's a balance of all the amenities combined, location as well, to produce the value. It's not, it's not as straightforward as you have a 2,000 square foot ranch that's built in 1996. It's worth this. And it's also modeled after and based off of the current difference between the assessed value ratio and the median sale price with the current value. So we're finding that, I did a, we did a market study, and we're finding that some of the houses are typically 100% or half the value of, of what market is in 2019. We're seeing that some of the sale prices where I don't have, I have it here, but I'm just doing off my memory, around $172,000 was the average assessed value. And we're saying for the similar types of houses, we're seeing it sell for around $340,000 range. So the relationship between the current assessment and our market does also.
That's, that's the part, thank you for explaining that, because that's the part that makes me nervous.
Right.
For, because you're, you're trying to go off what today's value is. And there's a lot of things that are going on today that makes that value high. That may not necessarily make it high a year from now.
Exactly.
Before the next assessment.
Exactly, before the next assessment.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we saw that, like Milton, for instance, had a 68% CLA that they had to go back up and be reassessed. It went to 107, which is above 100, I get that, but it was 107. And it dropped down this year back to 86. And that was 107 last year.
Wow.
86 now, because the homes that sold of the last year have been inflated again, raising that, or lowering CLA number.
When was their effective date for their reappraisal?
Their reappraisal finished spring of last year. So they finished it up then, and then it's gone back up according to the state.
As we're looking at the market currently, since 2019, we're really seeing a huge surge in prices from 2019 to 2022, 2023. As we're seeing that the Federal Reserve has increased the interest rates and really slowed down the market. We're kinda seeing that lag effect happen right now. And we're seeing that we're kind of in this in-between phase of, A, what's the Federal Reserve gonna do next? And B, with, we have limited demand, or we have limited supply high demand that produces, can produce very unreliable and unstatistical forecast projections. So as we sit through this next year, I think we're gonna be sitting pretty, we're gonna sit in a very comfortable position in comparisons to people that have reappraised in '22 and '23 where the volatility was still happening. We're kinda seeing this lag effect slowing down. You're noticing that houses are starting to sell a little bit less. We're kinda seeing a softening of the market. We're still seeing appreciation, but at a slower rate. So I think us in the position, St. Albans City, in the position of the reappraisal date of 2024, without seeing the appreciation rate, the federal interest rate plummet, I think we're gonna see a more favorable year-over-year equity position compared to those of Milton.
Those of Milton, yeah.
Milton? And what can happen and what has happened when? So we, the state's kind, it's kind of converted to the COD as a coefficient of dispersion versus the CLA. They're both blunt instruments for telling people they have to reappraise. But what we can do and we have done is a statistical analysis update, is a value update versus a full inspection. Yes, Tim? Sorry.
You can go on and on, which is fine. What, what we need to do is continue to monitor the market. And we'll, we'll run iterations of our analysis throughout the year. And then at the end, we will be at market with property values in the city.
Yeah, I would add that anyone who did a reappraisal in '21 or '22, you still had a lot of pre-COVID sales data to use to get your sample size up. And, and now we're in the position of, of most of the sales data we'll be able to use is post-COVID and really reflects, really reflects the current market.
So if I remember my Lister terminology, obsolescence?
Functional or?
Functional, I believe. So if I, hypothetical situation, if my house is located next to a four-unit.
Yes, external obsolescence.
Exactly. And it's a little dumpy. How's that judged moving forward?
How's the external?
How does it, how does it impact your appraisal?
Your neighbors, your neighbor?
No. How does my appraisal be impacted by my neighbors?
How does external obsolescence affect individual assessment values?
If it's a dumpy house next door to you, does that impact your appraisal?
It's gonna impact the price I can get from my house.
Right.
So how do, how do you take that into consideration?
John, John, functional external obsolescence, case-by-case basis, are we looking at neighborhood division allowance or multiplication factors? How, how would you approach an individual's external obsolescence?
Well, I, I get this a lot. And when it typically, I don't make adjustments if the neighbor has a sloppy yard because you'll have that spot, those spot adjustments all over the place. It's, if there's some, an item that is truly some, an external. It's, um, if there's some, uh, an item that is truly, uh, some, uh, an, an external, external deficiency or something that really drags down the area, uh, then we can recognize that and we would apply that to multiple properties. It's not typically just the neighbor that, uh, doesn't keep their property as neat as, uh, as you'd like. We don't make, we don't typically make adjustments for that. Um, if it's a contaminated site, well, that might be a different story, or a, a heavy manufacturing facility, those types of things.
I got a question for you. I live next to the elementary school. Um, I'm just curious about my property, what it would be reapprised for.
Right now?
Yeah. No, well, when you come around, I mean, I'll let you in.
I'll let you in.
I think this question is, is the elementary school, uh, should it increase its value or decrease its value? What, historically, what has been, uh? I'll let you in, don't worry about that.
John, is a?
I'm, I'm, I don't hear the whole question, I apologize, I wish I could.
Is a school, school considered an external obsolescence?
No, I don't believe so, why would it be?
Could be an asset too.
Well, there's, we have one in town that complains about traffic getting in and out of her, her home.
Oh, yes. Yeah, the answer's no.
Family's, uh, activity near school, so the kids can walk to school.
Some, no.
I, I, I will apply an external obsolescence to an individual property with a little bit of caution.
In making your determination, do you use, uh, the number of houses available on the market? Do you, does that, does that factor into your determination at all?
For, how's that?
Yeah.
Um, are you asking, do we base our models off of the?
Existing housing stock, right? Or, or available housing stock, put it that way.
Wouldn't that be the market rate versus the appraisal? They're two different things, correct?
So we are gonna base our models off of the close sales that have happened within 2023. Typically, this is what happens, we'll take the close sales from 2023 and we'll, we'll make sure that there's nothing that's changed from the assessment to the closed sales and is providing a very reliable relationship between the assessed value and what the current market is. Now, if there's not enough sales sets in that, we can take sales from 2022, time adjust them forward and bolster our sales set, so we can have a more, uh, more, um, a higher, higher number of statistical likelihood.
If there's a lot of people who wanna move to St. Albans and there's not a lot of houses for sale, wouldn't you say that the houses that are for sale are gonna go up in value?
That's true.
So when, so if that's gonna be part of your analysis on the, uh, value of a house, shouldn't you know whether or not there are gonna be new houses being built or new living units being built in the vicinity as to whether or not that's really gonna be an issue a year from now?
Um.
For instance, us, how many are we putting together now? A hundred?
But those are, those are apartments.
Well.
But still.
John, do you know how to answer that?
But your analysis.
If I, I heard the question right, um, there's a, a multifamily being built, uh, near a house and how is that, is that, is that a negative impact or any impact at all?
Not really.
No, that wasn't a question.
Now, John, John, the question has to do with, is your data mostly looking in the rearview mirror at data that is exist or in, out the windshield and how the market might change based on new housing units coming on? Mostly rearview mirror, correct?
We do, you do, you do both. First off, you look at the sales that have occurred, and we'll continue to follow sales into 2024 as well as the 2023. And we may, um, try to understand the, the 2022 market and see if we can time adjust those so that we have more reliability, and as, the larger the sales set, the more reliability you tend to have. But we also like to trend forward, and so we run some correlation studies to try to understand the trend of the market moving forward into the future. So we do look forward in that sense, but we also, um, base it based on the sales that have occurred as well as the inventory in the days on the market.
I think that's an unreliable standard myself, uh, because what's happened in the last forty-eight months is not typical of what would normally happen in the city of St. Albans. So I think that your valuation is gonna be heavily skewed in favor of a more expensive proposition or more, more expensive property value, based, if you're basing it just on that criteria. And I don't think there's anyone in this room that disputes that. Is there anyone in this room that disputes that, what I just said? You don't think that the last couple of years have been extraordinary? Pandemic?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, people living at, uh, working from home, uh, mortgage interest rates have all, uh, taken a, 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 the toll on raising the value of homes? And I just think if you're gonna look back in the last couple of years, that's not a very good analysis of what a typical value of a house is in the city of St. Albans.
We don't understand appraisal is a snapshot.
We are, we're obligated by the state of Vermont to appraise properties for what they're selling for. And we'll, we'll, um, run several tests on equity as well as, uh, run the test that the state requires us to run to have a passing reappraisal. So we can't go our own route and, and say, this is what we're gonna, how we're gonna set properties. We're bound by state law as, as well as International Association Assessing Officers, uh, measures of, of uniformity and equity.
In your experience, when you do an appraisal, you do the citywide appraisal, everyone's numbers go up likely, how does that impact their taxes? So in my mind, if everyone goes up, I shouldn't, like, get a huge increase if everyone else is getting an increase. So in your experience, how is that impacting what people have to pay in?
Do you want me to say it, or you got it now?
Just give me the answer I want.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can talk about this. Uh, the, the study that we, uh, the preliminary study that we provided, um, shows that, uh, residential properties of different types of properties in different locations have increased at about the same rate. So that tells me that when this reappraisal and the new, new numbers are in, that there won't be this tremendous amount of change of tax burden, which I was pleasantly surprised to see, that, um, a lot of properties have increased relatively the same amount. That's just not, um, that's not for every single property, it's not an indexing of value, it's to recalibrate properties to an estimated market value per, per law. Um, but we do run statistical analysis and measuring the current assessments to the current market. And I was pleasantly surprised with, um, those ratios being very similar to each other, different locations and different property types.
But they're, our taxes are probably not gonna go down.
Taxes aren't gonna go down, it's, it's gonna be.
Why do you wish? Like, is that a different?
Yes.
Valuation approaches, the income approaches, three different valuation approaches.
What you were saying earlier about the differences between the prior value and your current value, your prior, prior taxes and your, your, your current taxes. Uh, essentially what we're doing is we're taking the, the, the pile of your budget and we're splitting it up fairly. Uh, we're gonna have vertical inequities so that, um, we have equal distribu- distribution of tax burden from the high-end properties to the lower-end properties. That's called COD. We have to have that within, uh, uh, ten percent for the I double A O standards, I believe. The price of your house was a hundred thousand dollars and you owed a thousand dollars for taxes, great. Now your property is worth two hundred thousand dollars. Do you owe two, two thousand dollars worth of taxes? No. Because all of the house values are gonna go from X to Y. That doesn't mean we're gonna make two pies worth of taxes. The, the tax burden still has to be cut up legally from what your budget has, I mean, congratulations for us in the budget. Um, so your tax burden will not double. The tax rate at which your multiplier will have to be inverse, it won't be exactly inverse. You might, uh, you might have slightly higher taxes, slightly lower taxes, you might have very similar taxes. And that's essentially our process, is redistributing what, oh, you have, you now have a two-car attached garage, your house is worth ten thousand dollars or more, you need to pay that ten thousand, ten thousand dollars worth of tax burden. And that's, that's kind of our job, is solving that inequity throughout the.
John, who, who'd you mention the third-party, third person in your group is?
Rob Coffey.
Rob Coffey.
Rob Coffey from St. Albans?
Yes.
They picked him, so we let him all in our houses.
Yeah.
So Rob, Rob.
Yeah, actually, Rob, I think Rob's been all the houses in the city, so that part of the project is done.
What's that? I didn't hear that yet.
He's been in most of the houses he's been.
Yeah.
Um, what is Chip, if you, off the top of your head, what is the current CLA for St. Albans?
Sixty-four.
No.
Something like that.
Sixty-four. Ish. Ish. I'm hearing sixty-something being batted around the room, and that's, that's about right, yeah, it is really low.
Assessed per hundred dollar value, how much you pay per hundred dollars value for a house is divided by that number. So the closer it is to a hundred, that number seems better. So that's why your ta- your education tax goes down, so the more accurate this is, the better the education rate may be, even though the property tax may go up, your education tax, which is a significant chunk of it, will be adjusted down based on the CLA value if that remains in place after the next legislative session.
And that was gonna be my question, did you, did you give any thought as to what the impact would be if we were at a hundred percent CLA on the, on the school tax?
Um, the impact would be that the education tax you pay would only, only, only be based on your value on the grand list and whatever tax rate comes out of the state for the education tax. Um, if, if our CLA was one hundred. Um, actually, if the CLA is higher, we, our, everyone's tax rate across the board is, is lowered a little bit. But, 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 but the net effect is that it, it's, it's not, it might, I, I don't know if that might benefit taxpayers in general or if it's a wash across the board. Because like we've been saying, the CLA is being used right now as a blunt instrument to make sure that the city of St. Albans isn't getting a pass on, on, on the taxes we pay because our grand list values are so low. And so it's bringing everyone's taxes up. When the reappraisal is done, there's going to be more fairness based on what your actual, what your actual property is like. So some people will end up paying a little bit more in taxes and some people will end up paying a little bit less. Um.
No.
But actually, across the board, the amount of revenue we send into the education.
Nobody's paying less.
Tax system will be the same. Um, because now our grand list will affect the market, the state doesn't need the CLA anymore to make sure we're paying that much. And now it's just gonna be based on our grand list, which is a bit obvious.
The purpose of being ordered to reappraise is to maintain equity and for the state of Vermont to harvest growth in growing communities so that it can be distributed statewide as is required under the Brigham decision. And that's what this is about.
That's right, and that's why we wanna make sure that with the prices or the analysis that goes into the value of our homes is based on reasonable assumptions from the past and the future instead of what something sold for a year ago in the middle of a pandemic or two years ago in the middle of a pandemic.
And I think these, these guys, I'm sorry, these guys get that, the box they're in is the standards that the state of Vermont has set for all of the appraisers because it's one statewide system.
But to Tim's point, someone was selling a two or three-bedroom tiny little ranch down off of Lake Street for five hundred thousand dollars. So that is what we don't want you to use when you evaluate my ranch, right? Like, I.
Well, well, uh, Tim, Tim, to your point, the way, the way in which the state.
Exactly, it wasn't worth that.
Is that if we do this, if we do this reappraisal now at an inflated market and, and, and you're worried that the market then goes down and we just, we just reappraise ourselves up here and then the market goes down for the next few years? Well, that's gonna raise the city's CLA. And so it is gonna be reflected that now our grand list is valued over the market. And when that CLA over one hundred percent gets applied to tax rates in the city of St. Albans, it's gonna lower the state tax rate that gets raised from the city.
Okay, thanks, Chip.
Are we seeing these guys again?
See them as much as you want.
I mean, uh, I mean, throughout the process, are we gonna be updated? I mean, April one, that's right around the corner, there's, these guys are gonna try and do something by April one? That's three weeks ago.
April twenty twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five, hey, someone said twenty-four.
Yeah, and I was like, twenty-four.
What's he talking about? Three thousand houses in three weeks?
No, it's for twenty-five.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, I, I'd like to see you guys again as things go on, just to see how, because we're, we're the ones who are gonna be asked all these questions. When those things start going out, there's gonna be people calling us up. I, I'm out a lot, I'm gonna see people all the time saying, hey, do I have to let these guys in, Tim, and what if I don't? You know, what's this gonna do? And I, I wanna make sure I know what's going on.
So, uh, uh, I don't know if Chip stated earlier that we did create a website and the website does have a couple of very nice, easy, gentle.
FAQs.
FAQ, and what is a reappraisal videos? And it shows all these basic concepts that ninety percent of the questions are gonna be, my value's going up. I don't wanna pay double my taxes, and it kind of explains in layman's terms.
And honestly, pushing that stuff out on social media is probably going to get more traction, just turn the comments off, than, uh, this, the city website.
I think I definitely agree with Tim, like, our constituents, like, people are definitely gonna ask us a shit ton of questions, a lot of questions, right?
And I'd like to know, I'd like to have it cold, I'd like to know cold what the answer's gonna be.
And is it possible for you to mail out, mail out handouts? Because I know some people that don't have a computer and don't, don't have access to websites.
Yeah, so we've also created a triplet. Okay. That says some same, similar information since some FAQs. Good.
What is the current?
One last question.
Eric, you've got it.
I was just gonna ask, um, what's the current quantity count of grand list? Like, how many residential units do we get total?
Twenty, three hundred and change.
Okay.
How many are apartments? Do you know?
No, I can get it back to you.
No, I'm, I, I'm curious about that. No, I am. There's one next to your house.
That was, Eric had the last question.
What do we call him that now? An external obsolescence? That's good to know.
He'll come back around.
Yeah.
Marty, question, on you?
I would just go back to your question. So a house that is next to an apartment house that's not owner occupied, that has police showing up to a half a dozen times a week, is gonna impact the sale of that property. But you're not gonna consider that when you're appraising it?
John, did you hear that?
Probably not.
I think, I, I think I heard something about it. It, it said something about, uh, a, a house that's next to an apartment and that if this, if it affects the sale price, we're not gonna, we're not gonna consider that. No, of course we would. Um, the, that house, the, the houses around there would be, would be partially impacted, uh, the assessments would be impacted by the sale price that is in that neighborhood. So in a sense, it, it captures it, um, in that, in that way. If it's a, if it's a, it being negative next to, uh, uh, an apartment building.
So then the, the, the negative was that police are called often.
Police are outside often, drug deals, whatever the case might be.
Sort of place for that comment, comment section?
Yep. It, hopefully, we'll be, uh, calibrating the, the market demand for, in that area and recognizing the state of, in that area's condition, basically, the external condition versus other locations.
Why don't we get these back, guys, back in after they're a third of the way into it?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great idea.
John, thanks for joining us, uh.
Thank you.
My computer, Tyler, thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you all, thank you for the, the opportunity to give us this, uh, this contract. Really looking forward to it.
Thank you, John, see you soon. Andrew, thanks for making the trip. You thought that was tough, now we got the city flag.
Also, we need you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew, thanks. John, help us out? Tyler, uh, Chip. We're gonna move on to item number eight, which is the consideration of official flag.
Yep. We have Jim Proff joining us tonight, uh, as you remember, Jim is a, um, uh, I forget, I forget the term for the person who specializes in the design of flags, but he presented an idea for the city to have an official flag. Um, last year, the flag incorporated the city's leaf, uh, emblem from our logo and, uh, the color scheme from the city as well as some other features that represent some of the best principles of flag design. The city council wanted to get more. The city council wanted to get more inputs on, uh, from other groups on the flag and we ran it by the Belonging Equity and Inclusion Committee, the Downtown Board. And because it had an arrow-shaped chevron in it, we were worried about, um, accidentally appropriating, uh, important symbols. Uh, I also made contact with the new chief of the, uh, Mississauga Nation, the Avanaki up in Swan. And the, 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 the input we received was that folks thought it looked fine and, and we also received some input from uh, just basically saying, you know, if you're worried about the chevron, just remove the chevron. Uh, and so I'm gonna share my screen real quick. I don't know if you can see this, but.
Yeah, we saw it briefly, Chip.
Saw something briefly. Hang on.
It's gone now.
So there it is. Here's the redesigned flag. Now it has a simple white arrow uh, with the green and the, the city leaf positioned towards the left side of the flag because that part of the flag will be more often kept upright by the pole as it waves or sags in the wind. Jim also supplied us with the, um, the fun, uh, gif that shows the image in motion. There we go. So that simulates what the flag would look like, uh, as it flies in the wind. Um. Jim, is there anything else you wanna say about the flag?
Can you hear me, Eric, Chip?
Yep.
No, um, I hope you adopt it. It's the mosaic of St. Albans with its colors and leaf and it's simple and uh, follows all the principles of flag design. No seals, no lettering, very simple, easy to reproduce. And hopefully, um, it can be flown throughout the city by different individuals and so forth. Uh, the city could use it in schools and so forth. So, um, I'm glad that the city is pursuing it. I hope you guys accept it. It would be a great flag. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. So the stage we're at is that, you know, we, we have a, we have a, a flag concept that was designed based on the principles of flag design. It's gone through some inputs. Uh, there was general agreement that it would be, it would be nice to have an official city flag. Folks would like to see it. I think the stage we're at right now is, you know, we're at the city council's leisure, whether you would like to entertain the idea of adopting official city flag or whether you'd like us to, uh, whether you have any design changes you'd like us to pursue. But if, if we do move forward with this one, uh, we would, we would go into the phase of, um, seeing how one could be produced in a, uh, in a good quality and durable fashion.
So I think, uh, overall, when we talked about this before with, uh, individuals from the prior council, I think everyone was in agreement that uh, they liked the idea of having a flag and, um, had a couple of questions. Uh, but, um, thanks for your work on this, Chip. I know you did it. Uh, since I worked on it since that meeting. I opened up for any questions to anyone, see if you have any questions regarding this.
More of a comment. Um, I saw this when it came, the original rendition, when it came across to us, uh, on the design, or the St. Albans with Future Downtown Board. And I do like the newer design, the adjustment. Um, I think.
What was the, what was the take on the Downtown Board?
Um, yeah, I, I recall that it was sort of like what Eric just said. It seemed like a good idea. Um, no one had any, any strong opinions about that. I think it was a good design that was presented to them from the beginning. There weren't any strong opinions about changing the design. I forget if it was the BEI or the Downtown Board that suggested maybe just removing the chevron. Um, but there were some questions that I, I recall from the Downtown Board about how, you know, how could we make it available? How would it interact with the city logo that we already have? You know, the city logo will remain the city logo. If we sell a city t-shirt, it'll most likely have the city logo that we all know. What the flag represents is that we could now have a flag. Uh, maybe we sell it. Maybe we just, maybe we, uh, just tell some local manufacturers that, like JC Image or Main Street Graphics, uh, set them up so that if local residents want a flag, they know where to buy it. But, uh, I think the real, I think the real goal is just having a flag and making it available to anyone that wants it, but also flying it, finding opportunities to fly it as the city.
Thanks, Chip.
I think, I think similar to the US flag, not that level, but we should set parameters around the flag's future reproduction cuz it may be that we extend it out to other vendors. And we wanna have specific clarification on the size of the arrow, the size of the, um, the, uh, the logo, the color, everything, just to make sure it's clear, quality.
Anyone have any questions for Chip? Tim? Are you good?
I'm good.
Entertain a motion to accept it as presented?
Accept what as presented?
The flag. This is what we would move forward.
Okay. Well, then I, I don't have a question for Chip, but I have a, I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't think I'm ready to vote for this yet. I don't know if we, I don't know if we've heard enough, had enough input from the residences or the, the, the citizens of the city of St. Albans. And I'd like to, at some of the major events that we have, have some type of polling or something, just so that I, we can get some more input. I don't think the input of a couple of boards and the city council speaks for four thousand people or five thousand people. And, um, so I, I'm not ready yet for this. I don't think we've had enough input.
What was the process when we did the new logo? Was that same process followed?
I don't recall.
Does that seem insignificant as well, so?
Is it possible?
We, we, we went through a lot of iterations on the logo, a lot.
I mean, as far as the public input and seeking that kind of feedback.
Initially, when we talked about it a while ago, I had thought that it would be, like you, interesting to get the community, people who live here, their input on it. Um, students. I didn't realize there was like a flag, like, design, like, parameters or like specifications that were, like, things that you shouldn't, shouldn't do a little bit higher level than maybe having a bunch of kids design it. I mean, I like the idea of getting input from people, at least seeing like, well, what do you think? But, I mean, I also don't.
I mean, the Maple Festival's coming up. That draws a lot of the residences out. We, we have a number of functions throughout the, the summer. The, the park stuff, where we can have a polling station there, uh, just to get some input and just so that I, we can confirm that everyone's in agreement with this. We're gonna get this thing done and a third of the people are gonna say, no one ever asked me anything and I don't like it because of this.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have that no matter what.
Well, and, and what's the hurry? How many years has, have we been incorporated? We don't have this flag yet. Is, is another year gonna hurt us? I don't think so.
Would you feel comfortable if there were like two different flags that people could even like weigh in on?
Just to say, you know.
So they have a voice.
We're thinking of this, yes or no, and, and just so we can get a couple of polls out there and say, well, look, every, every time we've asked people for input, this is what we got. Rather than just us here. I'm just, I'm just worried that.
So make a couple of flags to have out, like the Maple Festival, and see what people think.
We don't even have to have a couple of flags. We can just use this flag. You can just say, do you like it or not?
And it was, so let's say, let's say five hundred people respond and you get, you get two hundred fifty-one liking and two fifty don't like it. Where do we go from there?
I don't know. Sounds like the reappraisal to me, right? That's, that's what we're doing with the reappraisal, right?
At some point, we need to make a call, right?
Well.
And I, my concern about sharing it is staff is maxed out. Who's gonna man the tables? Who's gonna be at those events? Who's gonna?
It doesn't, no one has to man the table. We can make it, we can set up some, where, or, look, if you like it, put a red tab in this bowl. If you don't like it, put a yellow tab in this bowl. Something like that. Uh, uh, we, we can come up with something.
Go on, then, hold. I mean, it worries everybody, but at least you get a decent feedback of when.
I just, I just don't think we've, we've asked enough people. Yeah. And this affects everybody.
Jim, you got a comment?
Yeah, but just wanna let you know, I, I didn't hear anything, anything anybody said. Sorry. I, I can't understand what you're saying.
What if we?
Can you hear me, Chip?
Yeah, I can hear you, Chip. I think there are some issues with the owl picking up in, uh, audio that's farther away in the room.
Oh, okay. Do you know what it was about?
What if we ran this up the flagpole for a little bit? But just, not approve it, just authorize staff to use it a bit and get some.
See what people think.
See what people think. This is not a staff-driven initiative. This is driven based on public input. As an idea for citizen engagement and civic pride.
Where did it come from? Was it Jim?
Came from Jim.
And it lives?
Uh, I don't know where Jim lives.
Milton.
Okay. But, so when you say it was driven by the public, was it driven by citizens of St. Albans City?
It's driven by Jim.
Okay.
That's just, that, that's just my, my throwout. If you wanna go ahead and all vote accordingly, you can go ahead and put it up for a motion.
Go back to, go back to your, Jim drove it, came to the council, council said, good idea, let's move forward with it. So it was vetted to the, to the council.
Yeah.
And based on Jim's interest in flags.
Well, we knew, we know three boards that took a look at it too, right? So, but what about the general public at large? Has it been in the newspaper?
They don't read the newspaper.
No.
I do, online.
Yeah, online, yeah.
Um, Jim, in other, in other towns that have adopted a flag, can you hear me?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I, I can't understand anything even said. Sorry.
Derek, can you put the owl closer to the county somehow?
Um.
Hold on a second. This is the magic device.
It's a little better, I gotta.
It's a magic device. Maybe?
In other communities, have they gotten input from the community members? That's my question.
Most.
Okay, so, so here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw one of the new guys under the bus. Uh, Eric, can you put together a poll to ask what people think?
Yeah, we can.
You're the electronic guy.
So, yeah, you can definitely use some of the sources, like you're two St. Albans groups, with one of them's twenty-five hundred people and the other one's at like five thousand people, twenty-five thousand, sorry. The other one's at five thousand. So we're not sure if we'll just get St. Albans residents, but we can ask, do you live in St. Albans and what do you think of this?
That's better than nothing.
I think some, I think to your point, you just want some.
Yeah.
To show that we made some.
All I'm saying is be prepared if it's three thousand to three thousand and five.
Great, then, uh, be more likely that we both know that.
Hey, uh, Chip.
No comments.
We have the, uh, the Rotary Show next weekend too, which is in St. Albans, does draw all the crowds, but could we get like a printout of this at least to maybe have there and ask, have the board members, downtown board members ask opinions?
Downtown Board got a booth?
They do.
Uh.
Uh, they do, sorry.
Did someone just ask, could you, could you look at the owl when you speak?
Where's the owl?
Oh, hey. Uh, I was wondering, I'm not trying to speak for the Downtown Board, cuz I haven't belonged on it technically. Um, the Downtown Board has a booth at the Rotary Show. Do you think we could do a printout, bring it there and get feedback as well?
Um, perhaps. Yeah, we might be able to see if we can make that happen.
But if not, I think just a poll online too, like, if that's the least amount of manpower involved. And it shows an effort to at least get it out there.
All right, everyone good with that, honey?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed to that thought? All right. So Tim's gonna be at the home show, manning the booth all weekend, asking for opinions.
I'm there both days of the mornings, I'd love to ask him.
So Chip, can you work with Eric to get that to the booth? I print out of the flag?
Yes.
Thank you.
What's the question?
Do you like it? Yes or no? Circle yes or no.
Do you need it?
Come up with a question, Eric. You know, what, what are your thoughts on this? Do we need a flag?
Do you like, yes or no? And do you have any other thoughts as far as changes or anything like that? I'll get general feedback. I think it'll work a lot.
I wouldn't ask for too much information.
Work lots of nice.
Because then you might have more information than you want.
What are those other two, um, platforms?
Uh, I was gonna say Facebook and Survey Monkey.
All right, moving on to item number eight B. Chip, you wanna cover, you wanna cover the covered walkway?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we are, uh, we are, uh, applying to the Animating Infrastructure Program of the Monarch Council for a planning grant to, uh, come up with a system and a way of, of, um, displaying some local art on, uh, infrastructure. That's the purpose of the grant, but in a conversation with St. Albans Community Arts and Staff, we are, would like to apply for a way to, uh, uh, display public art along the covered walkway between the parking garage and the, uh, the mid, the mid, mid-block bump out across from the, from the, from Taylor Park. Uh, and it's just a five thousand dollar grant, but I think it could help us come up with a way to, uh, design how we mount the art, how we light it properly, and also the process by which we would curate or, or, uh, find, find the artist, uh, what, what kind of art would be displayed and how many people would be able to, to, uh, to participate and make the art. Um. The, the reason we're ringing it before the council is just so that we could say that, that we had brought it before you when we wrote the grant application. And if it has your support, then, uh, obviously, that would also be good.
Do you need a motion?
A motion would be great.
Yeah. I, I love the idea. I think it's great. It'll increase lighting in the walkway.
What about vandalism?
I'm sure that when they look at, like, the, what they're gonna mount it in, that that would be part of it to protect the artwork. And I think it would draw more people maybe into that walkway, maybe using the parking garage.
With a police escort.
So Chip, uh, Chip, you will choose, uh, the committee when you get, if you get awarded the grant as to how will you decide what the specifics are?
Yeah, I think it's, it's really about a committee, to design a committee in a way. My, my first impression is that it, it would be St. Albans Community Arts and Staff and working together, um, certainly involving other artists who might want to be involved they, within their network. And it, this is really about how you design the process that then would be used by the city and, and stakeholders to, to curate the art. And what would the role of the city council be, for instance, and that sort of thing? Um. And then, and that's really just, that's all they want these applications to be, is just helping, having us figure out, what, plan how we would do it. And then in the next iteration, we could then apply to this grant program again or to other grant programs for the actual implementation of the program.
I, I would encourage, hopefully, whoever does it to look at our city school, town school and VFA. There's some amazing artists there to not just think about professional artists, but also our youth.
You heard that, Chip? Anyone have any questions for Chip? Entertain a motion to approve the application?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the Covered Walkway Art Grant Application.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to, uh, the Financial Plan and Highway Standards.
These are a couple of forms we submit annually to the state. Uh, first, Sarah has presented the annual financial plan. She pulled together all the numbers. We, every municipality needs to show that basically it's budgeted to spend enough money on, on its streets and roads to, to meet statutory standards. We always, uh, we always meet them. That's not an issue, but it does require that the city council signs it. And then the other form is just an annual, um, it's just an annual reminder to the state that we have adopted the latest, uh, road and bridge standards, which we did back in June, or July of, of two thousand nineteen. So I included that little one pager with the Space Fear Signatures at the bottom and then, um, and then the standards that we, that we adopted back in twenty nineteen.
Once again, Chip, can you give an overview of Class One, Two, and Three Roads, please?
Class One roads are, are numbered routes, such as a state route, such as US Route Seven, for instance, or State Route Thirty-Six, um, that have, in a way, been taken over by the municipality. So we technically own the road. It still has to serve its purpose though, but we, we. It still has to serve its purpose though, but we, we own it, we get to manage it. And we, we're sort of the ones who have to take the lead on maintaining it. Class 2 roads are typically any, any road that link two numbered routes or also link two different municipalities. So an example of a Class 2 road in, in the city would be High Street because that links Route 36 with Route 105. But also it links, it, it links the city with the town, so that's another reason why it's considered a Class 2. And then Class 3 roads are basically every other street in the city.
Is Upper Weldon Class 2?
Upper Weldon is a Class 2.
Marty, any further discussion? I know we talk about getting paving dollars to cover Upper Weldon as a Class 2. We have not been successful. Is there any?
We met with them last week. They told us it'll be another three years before we see a Class 2 grant. There's no human interaction to determine whether the road needs paving or not. It's all by their metric system.
Primarily mileage-driven, mileage basis.
Length to me, not, not number of cars.
That's a piece of it.
It's in pretty rough shape now.
We did a site visit with them.
Didn't, that didn't make a difference?
They agreed.
Yeah, because that road's seen a major increase since the Clearfield Street reconstruction. That was a while back, but everybody shifted over. There's a lot of them are still using it, so there's a lot of ruts and damaging vehicles on that road.
And I, I get we're gonna get in three years potentially, but is it worth having a conversation with the town to potentially look at combining?
Well, their section is fine. They got a grant a couple of years ago and paved their section, so. The section that's bad is the section that's in the city. We'll end up having to put some shim cokes in there this year when we paint. And talk to the property owner that owns that field to try to create a swale, so it drains off. Right now it just basically puddles in that section of road.
I, I got a question. 38 here coming up in Newton, Main down Newton Street. We got some holes there for the.
How far down you're saying?
Well, it's, I see to the four-way stop, we got holes there.
You have a town getting by, you don't find a site?
Yeah.
Marty, do you know what your paving schedule is yet?
Uh, no, not definitely. We've got roads identified, but we haven't.
You know, it's already going to one of them?
No, it's not. That's a.
Must be, that must be Ward 1, right?
That's a Class 2.
That's why, that's why.
Ward 1 is in the same cycle as the Class 2 grants.
Yeah.
Every 10 years. No, but that, some of that will be taken care of with the project that's happening down there.
Guys, you got some awful, nothing, you don't want to break my front end or have somebody else, because you got some awful holes there.
Yeah, we have some.
Yeah, you got the truck squad over there. I saw a council, hello, said something else. Okay, any other road questions?
Do we need a discussion and vote on this, or to vote on this?
Separately or altogether?
What's that?
We can do them all together. The financial plan, yeah, highway standards, it's one thing.
Yeah, move it.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah.
So I entertain a motion to approve the financial plan and highway standards that was presented by Chip.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, motion by Trudy, second by Tim. Any further questions for Chip? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. We've got signatures coming around. We're gonna move on. Chip, thanks for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you.
You can take that St. Albans sign down now. Thanks, we're moving on to item number nine, which is landlord tenant ordinance discussion led by Councilman Mr. Hawkins.
Okay, uh, we've had some discussions over the last few months about tenants, absentee landlords, problems with multifamily housing. And I looked into some ordinances in other areas, and I've come up with, it's called a crime-free ordinance or nuisance ordinance. A lot of communities have adopted those, and the landlords aren't gonna like it. But it's, I don't think it's gonna be overly burdensome. The high courts in the, in the states have said as long as those are administrated, administrated fairly, then they're not a violation against somebody's rights. And an example would be a fine to a landlord if there are more than four city police interactions in a six-month period or a 12-month period, as long as those aren't domestic-related incidents. So that kind of stuff, I mean, it's, we're all bothered by it. I, I hear stuff weekly about it, people commenting on certain activities going on in these types of places. The upkeep of these places caused us to have a public safety ordinance. And I just think it's time that we start addressing this in some meaningful way. It's a problem. We're, we're nervous about it, and I'd like to get into it more. Just, I want to just brush the, go with a very light brush over the painting tonight, just so that I could let people know that I'm, I'm interested in it. I think there's a number of us on the council that are interested in it. And I'd like to have the mayor appoint a committee, which I would chair, and I would like to have Marie Basset and Trudy Coffey on that commission, along with the city manager or his designee, and Chip Sawyer and/or his designee on that committee. Just to bat around some ideas.
So I'm not gonna appoint?
And if, if, if you, if you, you know, saw fit to appoint that committee, just so we could bat around some ideas and maybe bring something to the council. But we're hearing a lot of stuff about it. We've talked about it a lot. We've talked a lot about it a lot with the press and outside the press. So it's time that we do something.
Do those ordinance that you had done some homework on?
Yeah.
Does it get into owner occupied versus?
Yes, it does.
City landowner, all that?
Yeah, it does.
So the, the constraints or the parameters put on landlords will give them a bigger incentive to carefully vet their tenants?
Yeah.
Is that how it, it gets to the tenants? Because the landlord holds a lot of responsibility and the tenants hold a lot of responsibility.
The landlords can use a statutory provision that allows for them to evict a tenant for criminal activity. And we can define in the ordinance what criminal activity is, and the statute's very clear. I'm gonna tell you something right now. I've got about a half a dozen landlord, I only represent landlords, I don't represent tenants. And I've got over, about a half a dozen cases right now, and there's no one who wants to do those cases. The courts are making it so difficult for landlords to evict tenants that landlords are, once they get their houses free and clear, they're making them into Airbnbs. So there's no more, there's no more housing, and that's why we're, the problem we're in. It's a lot of money for those cases to be, to go through trial, and it's just becoming a nightmare. Now, this ordinance is gonna place some burden on some landlords to make sure they know what they're doing with their properties. Because a property that has criminal activity into it becomes a public safety hazard to the neighbors and the community. And they're the only ones that are in control of that. And we, we've talked about it before of having a rental registry and, and maybe enacting some type of ordinance around that. But I think if we take this and reduce it down to a very easily drafted ordinance that can be easily followed and give the landlords a little bit of authority to be able to go into a court and say, "Look, this is what I'm up against. This is why I need to evict this person." We probably have less and less problems with some of these properties that we're having problems with in the city of St. Albans. I've got them up by my house. Tim, you've got them by yours. And.
Let's not wind until after the reappraisal though.
Okay.
Do you want to comment on this?
I couldn't agree more. I've lived it.
Anyone, council, comments, concerns, questions?
I think the only thing we want to make sure we're careful about, and something I looked up before we started, was the tenants that are victims and not the nuisances that are then analyzed by landlords that aren't aware that they are not the problem or the neighbors the problem. Because they did say that was an issue in other states, and we don't want to be liable of that.
I would speak as a landlord. You know where your problems are right up front.
It just requires, it requires some investigation and requires some monitoring of the property, and it requires a good flow of information from all the tenants, between the tenants and the landlord. And if, if we can foster that, then I think we've solved a little bit of the problem. And remember, the courts have already said that, that putting a police incident as a, as an allegation for an eviction, as long as it doesn't relate to police going there for domestic violence. So.
What if it's like a mental health issue?
Probably, probably would be the same, Chip.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's more like, like we're talking about the drug activity that people are witnessing on the daily. More self, I think we have to be really careful about that though, right? And not create a bigger problem for people who are, who are in those situations. We've, we've talked to a, a pretty big landlord in St. Albans, and, and he has said a lot of times it's not the people that he is renting to that are the issue. It is the people that visit the people he's renting to. So how, so that's just.
It's still a tenant issue.
Yeah, and yeah.
Right, right. So I think that.
But security cameras, lighting, you know, talking, keeping the, keeping the property in good repair, talking to the tenants, you know, is, are things that can help. Not, this isn't gonna happen in 30 days. It's gonna take a while, but I think we need to start moving on now.
We've been talking about it. I've been on the council a year now. We've been talking about it that long. And I think now's the perfect time because as we, you know, all of the housing that we're gonna be adding, the nice workforce housing is going to open up a lot of apartments in the city. So those people are gonna move out of apartments, the people who can afford it, and they're gonna live in the, the nice apartments, and the other apartments are gonna be open. So this is the time. It's gonna create, right?
Probably doesn't take long to, before nice apartments aren't nice apartments, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the apartment on Bishop Street that he, the landlord's finally got the drug dealers out, there's a contractor there now because the place is wrecked.
We can, we can expect some resistance from the landlords because it's, looks like it's gonna be something that's gonna be burdensome. But I think in the end, it's gonna help the situation.
We had our hand up.
I think if you're a good landlord, you shouldn't have an issue with this. Question for you. Is any way to screen these people when they come in, or is it against the?
The rules.
Is there?
A lot of these ordinances require a criminal background check. The landlord perform a criminal background check on the tenant.
Tim, BB.
Yeah, I just, I think there's also a role for the good tenants and the people in the neighborhood. I mean, in our situation, everybody was aware. And eventually when it worked out, a lot of people were talking to me and I was talking to Dom. And, you know, the place, the one, there's more than one issue, but the duplex, it looks better on the outside, but it's padlocked and there's no effort to, you know, clean it up.
The windows are broken.
The windows are still, are busted out and the plastic's still over it. There's very not, very little traffic. I don't see anything. But I think one of the people is back there, but, and I know that that's, you know, part of the issue as far as there's no treatment and no place to, you know, get these people. But I really think, you know, at some point, the good tenants want this too. I mean, it was, last summer it was just a wreck, you know, it was just terrible summer.
It's getting worse. It's getting worse. And it's getting, and it's getting a lot harder for these landlords to get these people out, you know, but.
Or even to get into their own houses.
Yeah.
Dom, do you want to work with Tim to coordinate something?
Yeah.
So are you gonna appoint that committee?
We can get together and get it done.
Okay.
I'm interested.
So if, if we can't get a committee together, then at the next council meeting, I'll make a motion to put a committee together. Okay?
I don't foresee that happening, but Dom, you're, you're pulled up.
Yeah.
Are there landlord groups? The groups of landlords have a little like club or something, or they?
They don't have a club, but they, they, they know each other.
There's a landlord jurisdiction in rural, we don't have a, we don't have a branch here.
That's all I had?
Thanks, Tim. You're bringing it back up.
Alright, moving on to mayor's report. I haven't even put a list here.
You sent me some of the stuff you have.
I'd like to, tonight wasn't a good electronic night, I don't think. I had one.
Not your fault, Eric.
Not pointed at the technician by any means. But I, I have, I had a hard time understanding Elena. And even Dom had a hard time understanding us. I think if we have a presentation, I think, and I get the virtual thing, but if they can make it.
So Mr. Mayor, the note I wrote down for tomorrow morning's conversation was, staff should be aware that the St. Albans City Council has a very strong preference for in-person presentations.
Yes.
And it needs to be the exception.
And Chip, that's not directed at you, you had, you were standing in circumstances.
A bit of a perfect storm in that the technology that we normally use wasn't available. We had to use the owl, which was new technology, but I think even, even so, I think that preference has been made clear and we just need to implement it.
It'll save time.
And we encourage people to show.
Well, I, I mean, the language I think that staff will need to use is, is that our, our council has a, has a strong preference for it. Because our, because, you know, the professionals think they're doing us a favor and, you know, we're not paying Elena's mileage from New Hampshire and her hotel and all the rest, but.
At least if we get a primary representative with the bulk of the majority of the knowledge present. They have supporters online, and that's the case, they should be doing the full presentation. They should just provide ancillary answers.
But you never know who's gonna need to take the question, and, you know, you have two people and, so we'll turn the ship that direction.
It's not been a problem until today though. So Mr. Owl did a great job.
We use it the downtown more, it works.
Oh, really? Interesting, okay.
That's a new computer.
It's not Sarah's fault.
No.
That's great. This is the like, if you don't do a good job, they'll never ask you to do it again.
Well played, then, well played.
Other question, how many years have we had the same audit firm?
Eight.
And I guess there may be few firms that do this, but do we want to consider, consider putting it up to bid?
I think we did go out to bid in the middle of that.
I'm just saying, the standard, like every five years, you should switch it on.
Shake it up. New lives.
They do have a different partner, a different lead and a different team every year, but I understand, you know, not so to get annoying.
Just something to consider next year. And I get that the skill set is limited for this type of audit.
Part of, part of what we've been planning at the staff level in anticipation of the state audit of the TIF is to have an independent review of our own external auditor, and I, I guess I'd like to get through that before we switch up the team.
A couple of things, hung shows this weekend. They have 100 booths sold, Rotary's 100th anniversary, so. And then you do have the St. Patrick's. And then you do have the St. Patrick's Day parade on Sunday.
Next week? Sunday, right? Is it this Sunday or next?
No, next Sunday.
Next Sunday.
It's coming Sunday.
Yeah, this, oh, this, yeah.
It's Monday.
Oh, that's right. That's right, Tuesday the 11th. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. So Sunday's the 17th, right? Right?
And then I don't think we'll be meeting again before the eclipse. Not sure what to expect for the eclipse. Don't know what the crowd's gonna be. But thank you to Arlie and Hurricane for meeting and coordinating logistics and trying to get that moving forward.
We have any glasses left?
There's a ton of glasses around.
So people can come in again?
I don't, they should be able to come here with people's dresses on.
Glasses everywhere, yeah.
Yeah, Arlie says they still have a number they have to get to businesses before they can give a final...
I think there's about 25,000 out there. Downtown, if anyone needs something, let me know. Council orientation, Trudy, we didn't do an official one with you, but with Chad and Eric, Don and I talked about sitting down with, with the new ones anyway. Then the existing ones are welcome to sit in online as well. We'll pick a date and, or an evening and let you know. Don, you'll coordinate. Trudy, right into the fire today. Don, you had mentioned, we talked about website a little bit. Is a new website being contracted?
Sarah, can you brief us on that?
I can. So our existing website provider was bought out by a new company. And they renewed, we renewed our contract with them. And the renewed contract comes with a website update and refresh this calendar year, early this calendar year, which is now, I guess.
Oh, Marty, I had two comments and then Chip, maybe you haven't put on this, but I had two people saw me asking that we leave the lights up until the park longer.
Too late.
Like seriously?
Yeah. In the future, if we could, they think it's more festive and reduces sort of the vagrancy in the park. If the lights wrong, so...
The only challenge by the time this time of year rolls around with the snowstorms and everything, those lights have taken a beating. But we've got to leave the ones working.
How much of an impact is it on our electric bill?
We usually get a comment about this time of year from Counselor Hawkins asking us to please take down the lights.
No, it's the Santa Claus, the Santa Claus sleigh, that's what I...
I thought they'd been up a long time, okay.
Although I'm okay with the lights. It's the Santa Claus sleigh, yeah.
My other stuff, Don, I'll catch up to you with, so let's go around. Newell, what do you got?
I was saying, where'd you want?
I just asked. School's going well?
As far as I know, everything is moving.
No, you've had no complaints?
No, the only thing I had, I talked to the city manager last time. You got a lot of these people coming up and asking for money. You know they're on drugs too, you know? So nothing we can do about that, huh?
Pass me a lot.
I know I don't have any.
Chief, you have any comment on that?
We can move along, but they're on the sidewalk, there's not a lot we can do, no.
Yeah. Because I've had them come up and ask me for money every day. But I mean, that's insane.
We can, we can ask them to move along the stores. If they're in the store, they can be trespassed out.
Yeah, because one was up at the whole stop this one day and she says...
Yeah, we don't hurt well, she, she has moved along.
I think she's in New York City now. Because I see him at the railroad station about a month ago. There, they left town.
Now, there's, there's still one.
It's still quite often. She's back?
I'm not hearing of her.
Okay, Marie?
Nothing in my ward, but I would like to make a comment that we had a pretty major water leak across the road from us. I messaged Marty and I think he was there within 15 minutes. And they had it all fixed. And the homeowner was very appreciative. So thank you, Marty, for what you did and your team. She spoke volumes about how we responded, so, yeah, thank you. That's about it.
Chad, what did you find out today?
Appreciate you guys reporting me. I'm a year where we're reassessing everybody's home value. That was nice. Missed that talk and the coffee.
Had a good one. So we just do, for Eric and Chad, do a round, sort of round robin at the end of the meeting if you get comments or concerns. And Chad?
Hi, Eric.
I prepared for this. Actually, I want to start saying like a sincere gratitude.
Let me interrupt you. Chad took a lot of heat for taking too much time at the meeting. So you might be the new Chad, but go ahead.
All right, sure. I just want to say thank you to everyone that, you know, gratitude to the neighbors who supported me in becoming your representative. Second, I had the privilege of working with a lot of the neighbors throughout my canvassing. A couple of them brought issues that they weren't sure who to go with too. So I was able to redirect them to Marty and a couple of them. And his team resolved them both within a couple of weeks, which is great. Because some of these issues were four months and they weren't sure who to go to. One of them was 10 years they weren't sure who to go to. So we're glad to work those out. Thank you, Marty. And also thank you to Marty's team because the streets are looking a lot better than they were. They were getting kind of sand and salt and stuff. And the trucks came through and they cleaned them up the other day and that was great. And as I settle in, I'm excited to work alongside and alongside you guys. So, thank you.
Excited to be in Trudy's room. Marty?
With the big eclipse coming up, you know, residents on Messenger Street, around the tractor parade, it brought up traffic concerns. It's concern has resurfaced around the eclipse. I'm wondering, Bank Street, High Street, Messenger Street, those little skinny streets with two-way traffic, is there any plan? If we're expecting the 60,000 people, which probably won't be that many, but is there a plan to do some more one-way streets? Or do we have more like barricades or something for the traffic flow on those streets where people park? Marty, I'm looking at you.
Not that I'm worried yet. I know we've got a planning meeting next week. Yeah, I can bring that up.
I'm not, I think we can probably do what we did last time.
That was one, that was one street. It was, it helped, but it wasn't, it wasn't the whole street. It was just one section of, of Messenger. But you know the streets that have the problem, right? The streets that you can't park both ways and still have cars getting through. It's just something I just really want us to keep it on the radar. So we don't have to call the police.
And see, I mean, short of how many people there actually?
This taps into this larger thing.
I mean, emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to get through if necessary.
Yeah, as our...
We're growing.
As our public safety departments get more strapped with dealing with some of the things that we've been talking about this evening. The amount of money that we're spending on events and staffing them, you know? Like if, if Trudy said to me tonight, I don't care what you do. You throw everything you got at it. You make sure people can travel on these streets. It can't look a whole lot different than what we're throwing at. We just don't have the people.
Can we get signs though? We try one, I mean, it was just a sign last time. Are there, is there a way to get more signs? It's not people. It's strategically placed signs that says one way.
Yeah, I don't know though, if you can, like Congress, I don't know that you can make that one way. Cars coming, you know, you could send them...
Right, Bank Street is a problem. But yeah, it's just, I just want us to keep it on the radar.
Unless you do no on-street parking on those streets, including residents. A lot of times, like you go up there tonight, especially on Bank, you'll have half a dozen...
Because it's, there's a, right. Right, and it's, there's a business up there, which obviously takes some parking also.
Right. But even on the lower...
And you need the parking for the event.
Yeah, and like can we, you know, can we shuttle people from the complex to the park? You know, there's, there's other ways to think about parking. But as we want the big events, but we also want, we don't want to have altercations like happened at the Maple Festival and the police had to be called like last year. So it's just something to keep on the radar. And is there any, I know that the...
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
Do we know, did the parking garage fill up for the tractor parade? Do we know?
It didn't meet capacity, no.
It did not?
We've got, we've got that program. So if it gets to 80% capacity, it'll say lots fall. And those have never activated. So you typically the fourth and fifth floor available.
And the parking garage has been, like, doing fine as far as safety and...
Doing better.
Doing better.
We've got a full-time position in the budget, July 1.
Okay.
We're considering enacting that earlier. Our parking enforcement officer has become a public safety assistant. And so we're considering, Chief and I need to have a conversation about this, but we're considering launching that parking person earlier in the fiscal year.
Okay.
So that we can deal with what we know is coming in the garage in the spring and do more parking enforcement.
Okay. I have one more question. The apartment building that, there was a fire on Bank Street, it's been purchased. Do you know what the plan is for that space? Because...
Tomorrow night, we have a board of abair to discuss that property.
Oh, maybe I'll go.
I don't know if the new owner will be present or not, but that will be one of them.
And this owner, it's not a community member, I don't believe. The new owner.
It's Gabe Handy. I mean, so, you know, Gabe rents to a different population than other Handy members that you were worried about in Burlington.
It's a name I see all over the newspapers.
Yeah, it's a different, he's got a different business model.
Oh, phew. Okay, so residents in that area are just concerned it's a big lot? Like what's going to, what's gonna happen in that space?
He's, well, I would should let him speak to it. Happy to talk to you offline about what I think is likely to happen there.
Okay.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yep, just a couple small ones. Marty, big hole across from Jeff Handy's house on Prospect Street. Big hole. Lot of vagrancy in the downtown shopping center. Not only people asking for money, but someone walking back and forth. Just F this, F that, and no one cares about me and all that stuff. I see this guy all the time. Today, he was at the Weldon when I walked into this meeting.
Oh, I thought he was on the phone.
He was at the Weldon.
Nope.
And I thought we were gonna get in touch with Grant. Have a meeting with Grant regarding the complex next to Midas.
We did.
Oh, you were on vacation. I was gone?
I was out there, that was December 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay. And Marie, you didn't mention it when your ward came up, but I'll mention it now. The population down by the shopping center on Lake Street.
Which we're discussing.
We're talking about that.
So what's going on?
We're gonna talk about some enforcement strategies and get an update from the chief. And I think exploring those is something that's likely to lead to civil litigation, which is...
Okay.
Why I suggest we move into executive session.
And I would say that I received complaints about certain landlords' parking lots off Lake Street that is attracting the same type of population.
Absolutely. And now that you brought that up, also the same type of complaint behind the TD Bank building by the parking garage. Unsightliness, stuff going on inside vehicles.
All right. Any other comments? If not, I would entertain going into executive session. Oh, I'm sorry, I have to do warrants in a minute.
Motion to approve warrants, 22924.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marie. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Mayor, I'm in, Sarah's answered all my questions I had earlier. So, good. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, one opposed. Warrant approved.
Motion to approve, meeting minutes 21224.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Marie. Any corrections, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ward one abstains.
You want to oppose to that?
Nope. Word five abstains.
And so does six. Special meeting 22624, minutes.
Can I ask, we have a motion, that was your motion?
Yep.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Marie, thank you. And that was for a special meeting 226. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Word five abstains.
Aye, board four abstains.
Okay, so I don't know if you're gonna get enough votes on that one. Because Newell wasn't here, I wasn't here, Trudy wasn't here, Chad's gone. That leaves just you and Marie. So you're not gonna be able to approve that.
How does that work?
It's not just saying that Robert Paul's orders don't require you to actually have attended the meeting to vote to approve the minutes as per.
Is it true that you can refuse yourself, but you can still be considered a part of the session?
Your abstention can count.
Towards the board.
Yeah, if it's, if it's... If it's gonna, if it's gonna bring an absurd result, then I guess you're allowed to do that, right? Isn't that what the, what the rule is? If it, if it presents itself to be an absurd result, then the abstainers can vote. So, yeah, I think that's, I think that's the way that rule goes. And I, I think it would lend itself to be an absurd result because we wouldn't be able to pass anything for that, for that meeting. If, if the abstainer's abstained because we weren't present. So I guess, I guess we could vote then.
Without a quorum because it was a special meeting, right?
Yeah, so I'll call for a revote for that.
So we're, re-vote on special meeting 22624. Is there a motion?
Yep, motion made.
Motion seconded.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none.
Ken, Mayor, I was here for that meeting.
226. We're all good. Motion passes.
That would be three, but the abstainers are gonna vote anyway, so we pass.
All right, entertain the motion, go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session to consider finding that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the city or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage.
Tim, is there a second?
Recording stopped.
Seconded by Marie. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing probable civil litigation.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Trudy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So as of 9:02, we are in executive session.